Good morning, everyone. We call in this Board of Commissioners regular meeting for March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is going to be approval of the regular meeting agenda.
Second.
So have a motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda will be a public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions, want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period, speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on the agenda, and the forms are available in the county manager's office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Yes.
Good morning, everyone. My name is David Barton and live on Lance Drive in Silver Acres. And I have so much concern about the speeders. I've been here once before, back around a year ago or so, about the way people are speeding down our street. And I've called the concern to the Sheriff's Department. Their answer is they don't have enough help. And that's our concern, because they're doing seventy, eighty miles an hour down that street. So I hope we can do something about it. I've got ahold of Charlie Webb before about it. Talked to her, she called me back. But it seems like nothing's being done. It seems like it's a single thing going on. Hopefully, we can get something done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Before I start speaking, I have a notice of intent. Can I make copies for the commissioners as well as the attorney? Can I have them issued out?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Delphina Jimenez, and I was born and raised in Silver City. I'm here presenting something that you can take for food for thought, awareness, or just plain freedom of speech. There is a committee who are trying to pass a resolution on the Citizens Advisory Board, and I see it as a citizens' control board over our Silver City police force. In my opinion, two of the council members are anti-police and have an agenda against them. The notice of intent that they are proposing is very questionable and unethical. They are laypeople who want to make it sound like it's a place to bring issues so that they can find an answer with the police department. None of these people on the board are educated on law enforcement or the states that govern the city or the state. If the advisory board is dominated by individuals with strong biases or political agendas, it may fail to represent the broader community intent, interest, leading to decisions that don't reflect the needs of all citizens. That's one of the biggest points I have with this board. They are asking no more than one total board member may come from a law enforcement background. They need to implement and change that wording so that they can have one, at least one, law enforcement background person. The other issue that bothers me is that four council members will be selecting four of the board members for the CAB. That doesn't sound biased to me. The bigger issue with the Citizens Advisory Board in Silver City, this is a small rural community, and everyone is related and everybody knows everybody else. How is that going to be fair? And some of the board members, and why the person that's bringing the issues to the advisory board, however, we're going to know whether, I mean, they will be related or they will be known by the board members, and I don't see that as a clear tactic. Another issue is keeping everything confidential. What is keeping the board from repeating what they are not supposed to? Yes, we know they're supposed to be honest, but are they? I see the CAB as a big liability to the city. This will be coming soon to the Sheriff's Department. You have a voice, and those are the county residents. Your constituents, neighbors, family members, they're also county residents, and the county residents, they come to Silver City to do their dental, their medical needs, their banking, their grocery shopping, postal service, dining at our restaurants. And your children and your grandchildren go to our city schools and colleges. They will be affected by the CAB also. You have a voice, let me see, yeah, you have a voice, and so do your county residents. You can speak at the meeting on March the twenty-fifth. I think that's when they're going to vote for the CAB. If you can't make the meeting, please email four council members and the mayor as to where you stand. The mayor can also have a vote if there's a tie. This CAB affects all Grand County residents, not just the city residents. Thank you so much for listening to me. And I just want to say thanks to Commissioner Eddie Flores for his dedication to our community and his service to the state police. Anyone who has a law enforcement patrol badge and who is a patrol officer, excuse me, is a hero to me. They put their life on the line twenty-four seven. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is going to be a proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions in Grant County and imposition of fireworks restriction. So have a motion by Commissioner Medina, I have a second by Commissioner Stevens. Do we have any discussion, commissioners? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's going to be a Hila Regional Medical Center report. Mr. Robert Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. I'll go through the, some of the statistics of the facility. This year, year-to-date, we are seeing more admissions, about twenty, more than prior year. Deliveries, newborns, about the same as last year. Where we have been putting a lot of effort and focus and increasing is our Swing Bet program. And you can see, we look at that with action days. And you can see the significant growth in that, and we still continue to improve that service and look to expand it. Surgeries are just a little under from prior year. Our ER visits continue to grow, and we do see more and more people in our ER as well as outpatient and clinics. So that's, you know, as a facility, that's, I guess that's good and bad, but. On the financials, we recorded for the month of January, eight point four million in total operating revenue, and recorded eight point two million in total operating expenses. That does exclude funds from SB one sixty-one and HDAA. Year-to-date, we're running a total surplus of about two point three million compared to around twenty-nine thousand last year. We have received a couple of payments from SB one sixty-one, and we expect to receive our first provider assessment kind of payment back to us from HDAA at the end of this month as well. There was a bit of a discussion last board meeting about bad debt and charity care, and I report charity care. Just so the commissioner is aware. So when you look at here at charity care, for year-to-date, about four hundred fifty thousand dollars, our bad debt is about two and a half million on top of that. And again, that's, that's just accounting principles on what you're allowed to count as charity care versus what you can count as bad debt is the differentiator with those. Some of the projects that are kind of going on and happening. I will say this, that within the healthcare industry, there is a lot of concern with Medicaid right now, and Medicaid cuts and what's being discussed on a federal level. We've done a revenue analysis, kind of a scenario analysis on if Medicaid is cut a certain percent, what impact is that on us? And we'll present and go through that with our board next week or in two weeks, what that looks like and what that would mean for us if there are Medicaid cuts. But there are, that impacts not just our revenue, but the HDAA, which the state of New Mexico recently implemented and started, would have an impact as well. Additionally, we are seeing delays, and at least I am from my facility with communication and projects from a couple of the federal grants that we've had, and still no communication. I have reached out to a congressional office to see if we can get some progress on that. So that's, that's where that's going. I've talked about the phone project for quite a while, and as of eight o'clock this morning, we are switched over to our new phone system. We just ask if there are, if someone does call or the call number, and it doesn't quite work right, we're working through some kinks, but we haven't had any reported thus far this morning on that. With the state legislative session, there are only about nine days left in session. And, you know, there are quite a few bills that impact healthcare and hospitals and physicians and providers throughout the state, and we're just kind of watching where things end up. And we'll, we'll make plans and assessments once, once things are passed or if they're signed by the governor, but we'll keep them a close eye on that. Dr. Leslie, Family Medicine Physician, started last month and is kind of grown quite well in her clinic. We have a general surgeon who is starting next week as well. So we're looking forward to that. We are engaged with a couple physician recruitment firms to continue to bolster up a few specialties that we're recruiting specifically for. And we've had some good candidates presented thus far, and hopefully we'll have some more progress to announce later about that. Commissioners, that's my report, and I stand for questions.
Mr. Whitaker, you had mentioned Medicaid and then Medicaid and the cuts and the potential of, you know, what you guys are looking at. I think it's important that, being that it is a county-owned hospital, I'm not sure how your Board of Trustees is doing this or handling this. But I would like to, at least the Grant County Commissioners and the public, get a good sense of what you guys are thinking, what's happening, because Hila Regional is a vital part to our community. And if it's going to hurt us in any way, I think that these commissioners, not only Board of Trustees, but these commissioners and the publics, the public needs to be aware of all this. I'm not sure if your Board of Trustees wants to do that under executive session. I would rather just be out in public, and I'd rather, you know, that they give us also a briefing of what they're bracing for and what we can help them. And because at the end of the day, it will affect our citizens.
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. And commissioners, you're absolutely right. And like I said, at the next boarding meeting, we do have a scenario analysis of what, what that impact looks like with us with revenue loss, actual cash revenue loss. I will, maybe on a positive light to this as well, the state legislator have been anticipating something like this, and they are working on a bill to create a Medicaid trust fund to help offset federal cuts to Medicaid. But we go with what we got for the moment, and we're making our plans and kind of looking at things with how things are going.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Quick comment.
Commissioner Medina.
So, Mr. Whitaker, I just want to thank you, the community not being aware that we're involved in a, some transfer data service that's been set up to help us assist with behavioral health transfers. It's going to be a better mechanism to allow us to monitor transfers and see who we're transporting on a regular, as well as additional outside assistance to help us get these behavioral patients out. Mr. Whitaker's really been supporting that project, and I just want to thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, commissioners, thank you, Commissioner Medina, for that. There is, so there is a program that started earlier this year with the central part of the state. And in April, May, they're moving to the southern part of the state. They're going to have a base out of Las Cruces. This is the Hospital Services Corporation that's operating this behavioral health transport under a grant, under the Rural Healthcare Delivery Fund grant with HCA. And it's, it's a one-stop shop. It's got a number to call, and they'll arrange and take care of everything. And it's going to be a wonderful service for our community. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thanks to both of you, appreciate it. That's it? Thanks a lot?
Yeah, thank you, commissioners.
Moving on to elected official reports. Madam Clerk, do you have a report? Moving on to our treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Chairman Ponson, commissioners. Before you is the tax maintenance report for February. The total amount of taxes collected for the month of February is one hundred and seventy-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. So far, for the twenty-twenty-four tax rule, nine million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents has been collected, which left the county at a collection percentage of sixty-five percent for February, for the twenty-four tax rule. The total, twenty-four tax rule, five million, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the total ten-year collection as of February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five is ninety-two point fifty-three percent, of which a total of seventeen million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-six cents of taxes were collected. That leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes, nine million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, ninety-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Going on with the status of the Treasurer's Office. We're preparing to send out our annual delinquent postcards. This is an effort of collecting delinquent property taxes that are subject to getting reported to the Property Tax Division. Once I submit the thirty-six months' delinquencies to the State Property Tax Division, they automatically charge one hundred and twenty-five dollars cost of state fee, and the PTD starts receiving penalty and interest to those accounts reported in July. Like every year, I welcome anyone who is delinquent to come to the Treasurer's Office and speak to me or call me over the telephone. I can do my best to give any guidance before the account is subject to Property Tax Division. The Treasurer's Office in solid ways will be closed March twenty-sixth for training on the county's new banking, internet banking system. This will be from nine-thirty to twelve-thirty on the twenty-sixth. I also want to express my sincere gratitude to you as the Commission Manager Web and the maintenance team for the recent office upgrade remodel. The attention to detail and expertise displayed by the Grant County Maintenance Team were truly phenomenal. Grant County is fortunate to have such dedicated professionals. As I mentioned to Director Jason Lockett, and Jay, your efforts never go unnoticed. I truly appreciate everything these guys do for us. I also would like to extend my thanks to Director Baca and the IT staff. Their team is quick on response times when equipment goes down, and they're very invaluable. I thank you and the maintenance and IT for all their hard work and dedication, and of course, my staff. They stand for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to next elected official, Bureau Sheriff, Raul Vino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Today, I present to you my report for the month of February. I just wanted to go over with you, we're still trying to figure out the bugs on the new CAT system. So the report I'm going to give you has stats on it, but it's all inclusive of actual dispatch calls and self-initiated calls. We're still trying to figure out how to separate the self-initiated with actual dispatch. But total cost for the month of February for the Sheriff's Office was one thousand five hundred and two. Out of all those calls, I'll give you some of the main ones that we got dispatched to. We had a total of thirty-two alarm calls. We went to, we investigated eighty-four domestic violence calls, which is pretty high for a month. I don't know what's going on with that, but it's, that was a pretty, a significant number for the month of February. We did investigate a total of forty-nine traffic crashes, forty-five of which were non-injury and three that were injury in the county. We had, we responded to thirty-three on one at subject calls. We had thirty reckless driver calls. We had sixty-two animal control calls. We had seventy-five suspicious activity calls. We did, the deputies did initiate three hundred and thirty-five traffic stops in the month. And so that's pretty much the highlight of the calls that, for service that we've had. There's, like I say, there's a lot more, but the main ones that I'd like to present. In regards to my Civil Process Division, they did serve two hundred and ninety-two documents, which includes subpoenas and writs. They did four transports to different facilities in the state of New Mexico for a total of eighteen hundred and seven miles that they were on. In our district court, we did have thirty in-person hearings that the district court had, that court security oversaw. And there was a total of seventy-seven inmates that were transported from GCDC to the courts that we had, that court security also takes care of there. Court security also did have a screening of seven hundred and ninety-one individuals going into the courthouse for the month. Let me see, in regards to our Stone Garden, we are currently applying for the fiscal year twenty-five op Stone Garden here in Grant County. We have requested a total of two hundred and eighty thousand in funding, along with one equipped, fully equipped unit and two mobile LPRs, which are license plate readers. We won't know until late twenty-twenty-five we get approved for any of that funding. In regards to our DA grant funding, which is for our fugitive apprehension unit, we did, that did get opened back up after the new district attorney came in. He had to re-sign the contract, which we did get approved and signed. So the deputies have been out doing, they've been continuing to do operations, searching and apprehending individuals with outstanding warrants in Grant County. In regards to, to training, I have several deputies that are attending training this month. That's quite significant, a lot of training going on for the month of March, but we're trying to keep up with, with our requirements for training. Plus more training to come that's going to be done in-house. So I have a lot of training coming up to keep these guys up and running. So in regards to concerns that, that are out in the community, I do encourage the community, if they have issues in their areas, jurisdictions, locations, to please contact, I understand that they do contact dispatch. But if they do not get response like they should, myself or my undersheriff are available. I have an open door policy, anybody is, I'm willing to meet with anybody, they can bring their concerns to me. I not only get concerns from residents out in the rural areas, but I also get concerned from municipalities that reach out to me. But, I mean, I'm not against that, but I, it gives me an opportunity to speak with other municipalities and chiefs to talk to them about concerns that are brought to me, and I refer them back to them. So I just encourage that. I'd rather they call me if they want something done in their area, and I will make sure and do my best to get the services to them and get things done. Like I said, these guys are very busy. Just in some of these calls that are, that are, take two to three deputies, ties them up, especially domestics. I mean, they, they do stay very busy on doing stuff like that and trying to run traffic. Motor vehicle crashes are time-consuming. And so, I mean, I get the frustration from some of our citizens, but we try to do the best that we can with what we have. So I just encourage the community to be patient with us, and we'll get to their needs. But I, I am open to any concern that they have, and I will listen to them, and I will do my best to get them the help that they need. Other than that, I have no, nothing else unless you have any questions.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Sheriff, for the report. With the domestic violence cases, I think you said eighty-four, are those unique individuals or are some of them repeat?
So the majority, a lot of these are, a lot are repeat offenders. Unfortunately, we have, we do deal with a lot of the same individuals over and over. But that's kind of high for me to see that high number for this, that month. And I'm kind of concerned of what really is going on with, why we're getting so many within that timeframe.
Yeah, I'm just curious about, I'm sure you probably have your own process of assessing, like the drivers, you know, when cases go up. But I'm just curious, curious if it's like addiction or mental illness or like problems in the legal, the criminal justice system where people aren't getting processed or referred to treatment. So if you have any kind of thoughts or analysis in the future, I'd be curious to hear that so that we could be more responsive.
Sounds good. And I did forget to mention that US Commissioners are more than welcome to come visit with me and talk with me. I'm here to listen, and I can explain to you certain things. I'm open to have a conversation with you all as well.
Thank you. And then one other question with Operation Stone Garden. Is there any kind of expectation that if you receive those funds, you're supposed to identify X number of individuals? Or like, you know, in the community, there's, there's rumors that like there's a quota that you have to go out and find people. And I heard that like ICE was at the Commons looking for people. So is, is there any pressure, if you get that money, that you have to find a certain number of people?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Stevens, for that question. Operation Stone Garden is actually, we're out doing traffic enforcement and working out towards the border area. In regards to ICE being in our community and that, that has not been, we have no expectation to be doing that. We are not even allowed to do it. We are not ICE agents, we are not, we have guidelines that we have to follow in regards to doing that. We did have a meeting in Albuquerque, I'd say about a month ago. And I did go up there personally, and I met with ICE and Department of Homeland Security. And we've been told we are not going to be doing that. They, we did, as the sheriffs, there was a sheriff's affiliate that met with them, and we have requested that they are ever in our county, that they notify us what they're here to do and why they're here. And they assured us that they would. So this, of me hearing that they were at the Commons is, they should have notified either of us. I don't know, they might have notified the Chief of Police, because they also had a meeting with the chiefs as well. But that's not our mission, is to be out looking and enforcing immigration.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Stevens. Any other questions? Commissioner Flores?
Mr. Chair, Sheriff. What exactly, what bugs in the CAT system are you trying to work out? Because I remember you said this last month, too. What bugs are trying to work out?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Flores. We've been trying to figure out, we actually had a meeting with the Director of Dispatch, I'd say, two weeks ago. And we're trying to figure out how to break it down to separate what self-initiated is and how dispatch and law enforcement logs it into the CAT system. So that's the issue that we've been having, trying to actually get the numbers to match what we're actually reporting in regards to self-initiated and dispatch calls. My, the individual that I have working in my office on this has been trying, and I'm reaching out. If any of the agencies have figured it out, that there's a way of how to. If any of the agencies have figured it out, that there's a way of how to, to actually get the numbers, I'm, I'm open to visit with them so that we can work together on this and get this, um, done. But that's the main thing that we're looking at is how are these numbers, uh, matching with self-initiated and actual dispatch? The dispatch call is not an issue, it's trying to break them down from self-initiated to dispatched.
Thank you, uh, y- you're working Stone Garden right now, correct?
N- not me personally, sir.
No, no, but the sheriff's department.
Yes, sir.
Out of the three hundred and thirty-five traffic stops that you said in the month, how many of those stops were made during Stone Garden?
Uh, a lot of them are made, I don't have the exact number in front of you, uh, in front of me, but, uh, uh, the majority of, not the majority, but several, quite a few of those are through Operation Stone Garden. As we are, that's part of the mission is to run traffic and, and, uh, on, on that grant.
And one last question, Sheriff, you, you stated a motor vehicle crash is very time-consuming, wha- what do you consider time-consuming?
Depending on the type of crash that we investigate.
They say a crash with, without, without injury.
Uh, probably thirty minutes to an hour, depending on the, if we need wreckers. By the time wreckers get there, get the traffic flowing again, uh, it just depends on the crash. So that's where some of the time is, is waiting on, on record services and, and clearing up the roadways and getting vehicles moved out of roadways. And things like that take a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores, thank you Sheriff, any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
No other elected officials in here. Moving on to the consideration of the cons- consent agenda, which will be for the regular meeting, um, February twenty-seventh. Minute meetings and in the safety net careful for twenty twenty-five, uh, third quarter payment. I'm going to need some help on this one. We did have executive session and is this the meeting we took action on? For, uh, the twenty-seventh? No?
It was action taken while, after we came back.
Okay. So on that one, Commissioners, and, and just for the record, there was, uh, an executive session held on, uh, regular meeting, February twenty-seventh. Only the items on the agenda were discussed and there was action taken, which was done in public. If I can have a motion to, uh, approve the cons- consent agenda.
I move.
Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to new business, it's going to be a consideration of approval for the, approval of the twenty twenty-four Volunteer Firefighters Annual Reporting for PERA. Uh, this is going to be for Cliff Hila, Fort Bear, Lor Mimbres, Pinos Altos, Sapien Creek, Tyrone, Number Migris, and Whiskey Creek Fire Departments.
Make a motion, approve is presented.
Aye, second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item E, consideration to dissolve Tucasa Advisory Board. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and dissolve the Tucasa Advisory Board.
Second.
Sub a second by Commissioner Medina, do we have any discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
Um, I just wanted to comment that on Tuesday, we had a little bit of discussion. And, um, you had mentioned that the, the goal of the Tucasa Advisory Board, um, has been met. And so that's the reason for dissolving it.
Correct, I think that, uh, when this started with Tucasa, I think they served a great purpose. Um, and they, I think they met what, what they needed to meet, so, and that's the reason for, for this and, and so that's why I put it on the agenda.
So it's not to say that the behavioral health goals of the community have been met, but the, the role of the Tucasa Advisory Board has been met. So, um, and I just, you know, I look forward to continuing to find solutions to meet the, uh, behavioral health needs in our community.
Yes, no, it's just the board, I think, uh, if it be here soon, there's going to be a lot more discussion as to the direction of, yeah, uh, what commission, the direction the commission wants ahead as a whole. So that's it. Any further discussion?
Quick question.
Commissioner?
Is there a possibility the commission could meet with the HMS Board to discuss these issues or plan?
Yes, th- th- yes, there could be. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to, uh, resolutions, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-five dash seventeen, public building animal prohibition, uh, prohibition.
Make a motion, approve.
I'll second, sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by myself, do we have any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item G, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-five dash eighteen, going to be county maintained road mileage certification.
Make a motion, approve is presented.
Aye, second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by, uh, Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Anything changed af- from Tuesday to now? No? All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Consideration of resolution R dash twenty-five dash nineteen, be authori- authorizing expenditures of funding for architectural services under the existing on-call contract with NCA Architects for the Public Safety Building?
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to item I, consideration of resolution R dash twenty-five dash twenty, it's a budget adjustment request.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, second by Commissioner Flores, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to, uh, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Medina, do you have a report?
Um, the only thing I have is that, um, with the quarterly meetings we've been having out in the Members Valley, it's kind of opened up an avenue for communication without them. And I just want to thank, thank, um, the residents who are calling me, talking to me, their concerns, their voice and concerns a lot more often, uh, through email, through phone conversations. I just want to thank them very much. Um, the next quarterly meeting that I'm looking at, I'd really like to take up the new commissioners as well as, um, the sheriff. There's a few questions that, that they got for you and, um, either you or Billy, we could get them there, just to discuss that. Other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Medina, Commissioner Flores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a, a, a few themes, Mr. Chair, very short. I've had several meetings this last two or three weeks, one being with, pardon me, one being with those Gregos, John Zemora. We talked about the fire departments out there and, and the, where it's at. And I, I think there's just a few things to be ironed out and I met with, with Charlene. And I think, uh, once we can just iron out those, uh, maybe some architectural things, some, some MOUs, things like that. I think, uh, we'll, we'll proceed forward with, uh, with that being taken care of for those folks out there. The other issue is, um, we are rescheduling, unfortunately, we lost power for the last GR, Hila Regional Medical Center Town Hall Meeting. We are rescheduling it. I initially said, uh, twenty-fifth, but then realized there's a town hall, town council meeting here. So now, uh, officially, again, it's going to be March twenty-fourth, Monday. And it will be held here in, in the Commissioner Room, not at the Convention Center. So I, I know it's been back and forth, but, um, hopefully we can make it out and take care of this meeting. I know a lot of folks were upset that it was postponed and we had no control over the power. I am still, uh, keeping on top of the CLL, the County Livestock Loss Authority. Position where we're at, I met with, uh, Commissioners in Katron County and they have to wait to their official meeting, the, the Livestock Authority, which is going to be held at the end of this month for, for our consideration, joining that, but they seem very confident that we'll be part of it. I am also in the process of scheduling, um, some sort of education for the ranchers and farmers in the Cliff Hila area with the, the wolf issue, the wolf issue. And maybe just educate some folks on, on how to be proactive and, and prevent, uh, an attack from happening. But the person that's going to do that is very educated and I'll, uh, advertise that when I get concrete, uh, dates and times. That's all I have, Commissioner, I'm, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores, Commissioner Stevens?
I just wanted to remind everyone that I, um, am available for meetings. If you want to contact me, you can reach out to me by email and we'll make an appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, Stevens. You know, um, here I go again, hey, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we had a member of the public and public input talk about, uh, the ordinance, or, yeah, the ordinance that's, that's being proposed by, by, uh, City Council for the Community Citizens Advisory Board. I understand that that's a city thing, but, uh, you know, I just, you know, really want to discuss and, and I hope that our, our town council, you know, understands some of what I'm saying, but, uh, and I'm sure they will. You know, here in Grant County, I'm not, I'm going to talk about Grant County. You know, one of the comments that was made that it's going to come up here to, to Grant County, well, far, you know, with me, I, I'm only one commissioner out of five commissioners. But the way I feel that would not happen here in Grant County, I would not, I would vote against it if any other board members would, would, uh, want to bring that up or want to do something like that as far as an advisory committee for our law enforcement. You know, here in Grant County, just to let you know, we have processes. You know, we are the governing board for Grant County, it's five commissioners. You know, we only have one, uh, employee that we, as a five, over, oversee, and that is our county manager. You know, and I would think that it's the same thing as far as the council. Um, not sure if their process is just strictly through the mayor or through all of them. But anyway, when we have or feel or get information from citizens in Grant County or don't feel, we discuss that with their county manager. It's a little different because we deal with elected officials, you know, our sheriffs elected, our treasurer, our clerk, uh, you know, our probate judge, our commissioners, our, our assessor. But at the end of the day, it is the governing board that needs to take this information into the citizens of Grant County. And it's up to the county manager to go ahead and take action if they feel that things aren't being done properly by employees or by some of the elected officials. There are steps as elected officials, as, or as county commissioners, that we can take if we feel an elected official is not doing his or her job. You know, I would think and I would hope that the, our town council understands and sees that chain of command with themselves. Either talking to our, our, the city manager if there is problems. Uh, I think that there's a lot of things and, and just reading and skimming through some of this. There's a lot of things that, you know, I think advisory boards or, or, or regular citizens of the community should not be privy to. You know, a lot of that is going to be discipline, a lot of that, and I see that, I think, i- in this resolution that only briefings of hope can be. I think by going down this road and that route, town of Silver City can expose themselves into liability. Because as you know, and as I know, you know, people just will go out there and talk or hear something and expose their town to liability. Now, I know that some of the things that have come up have been about, well, we're trying to stop liability while you're creating more liability, in my opinion. Um, I think that those things should be left up to the town council, uh, for them to act on, to look at, to direct their mayor, if that's what it is. And to direct their, their city manager to go ahead and make sure that the public is receiving the proper information and that the, uh, city manager is making sure that proper steps are being followed on complaints and discipline, whatever it may be. I don't see a need for, for a citizens advisory board, I think it's an overreach. And I think that they should just let law enforcement do whatever and then be managed by their town manager, that's my two cents. I know this is what we do here in Grant County, so, you know, I do agree with what was said here in, in public input. And, uh, I agree with it. So I really would appreciate, um, I don't remember the date that was said, I should have wrote it down, but I was writing another stuff down, that the community does see that, that the community does have full faith and trust in our town council to do what they need to do. And that they have this complete trust and confidence in our town manager to do what he has to do to make sure that certain things are being met and certain things are being done. Just like I hope that you, the public, look at us as commissioners and understand that you, we have your complete trust and confidence to direct our county manager when we see things that aren't being done for the appropriate action or for the commission to go ahead and take appropriate action or discuss appropriate action if we see things aren't being done. So that's my two cents. So, thank you. Commissioners, do you have anything else? Commissioner Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for those comments, and, uh, I also echo your sentiments and I, I was, uh, want to thank Mrs. Jimenez for her comments and bringing it to our attention, because you're right. I think in today's day and age, it's, it's tough to be a police officer. I have, uh, two child, two, two of my children, I should, they're grown-up children and a son-in-law. My brother, they're in law enforcement and I don't envy them because it's, it's a tough, tough age that we live in now. It's not like it was when, when we were officers, Mr. Chair. And I think the citizens advisory board is pretty much for cities that have issues, such as Albuquerque, Seattle, uh, big cities. And, and they have serious issues where he- here in Silver City, Grant County, we, we're lucky that, that we don't have those issues. And we're lucky that we do have officers that still want to work and go out there and put their lives on the line for, for minimal pay. And I say that with a grain of salt, because, um, I think our society is, is turning around here where other people are getting paid a lot. Teachers and law enforcement officers don't get paid what they deserve, but that's another conversation. But, um, like Mrs. Jimenez said, there's people that with no experience in law enforcement, that are going to be trying to dictate to the agency on what to do and how to do it. And until you've been in their situations, until you've lived a day in their shoes, these officers are making life and death decisions with a s- less than a second's notice. And it's easy to Monday morning quarterback them, uh, the next day, because then everyone can sit and say, well, they should have done this and they should have done that. But, um, I, I think you're right, the, the manager, the chief, they're doing the best they can. And, um, we're just lucky to have the officers that we have, and, and including state police, the sheriff's department, city and all the other municipalities within our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Flores. Anything else, Commissioners? Okay, um, I'd like to have the, uh, a motion to go into an exec- executive session according to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, section ten fifteen one, uh, subagent eight.
Make a motion, go on, executive.
I'll second.
Sub motion by Commissioner Medina, uh, second, uh, by Commissioner Stevens, do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman and Commissioners, are you all aware you're entering into executive session? Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Medina?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be entering an executive session. Ms. Mary Alice, I don't see us taking any action today.